Thank you very much. Um, welcome citizens of Cohasset, members of the planning staff in at the town hall, as well as our legal counsel Carolyn Murray, Lauren Lind, Jen Oram. We are going to call the meeting to order at 6:32 PM. The agenda October 6, 2020. I'll do a roll call by alphabetical order Brewer.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan.
Here.
Paul Colery. Paul Grady. Amy Glassmeyer. We're going to continue, we are going to continue the meeting with the planning board members present. I'd like to ask Lauren Lynn to please explain to the public how they can participate.
Certainly, so any members of the public wishing to address the board may either, you can insert written comments or you can ask, we can promote you to speak to the board if you wish. We ask that you insert your name and address into the question and answer function, and then we'll promote you that way. And then for the record, if you could just state your name and address before your comments, and please try to keep items, no, no more than three minutes per person, and try not to repeat items that have already been said. Thank you.
And if you've written in comments, you should know that we have put them in the record, and they're part of the conversation. The times for the agenda tonight are approximations. We will move through the agenda as we conclude individual discussions. I'd like to do an overview and approval of the agenda. 6:30 PM approval not required, Black Horse Lane. 6:45 PM approval not required. Atlantic Avenue, 42 Atlantic Avenue, 7 PM public hearing. Site plan 808 Chief Justice Highway continuation. 7:05 public hearing, a continued hearing, site plan review, 20, 25, and 30, Situate Hill. Can I get approval of the agenda?
Yeah, we, we don't need our approval. Let's do it.
Thank you, but we can do it.
You've never approved an agenda at the start of a meeting.
Well, it is actually a procedure that's listed on lots of boards that do it. So there. Let me begin by saying when the planning board members will speak, they will be speaking in alphabetical order Brewer, Callahan, Grady, Potter, Glassmeyer. And if Mr. Colery is subbing in, he will be called in order. Each will take five minutes to summarize their comments and each item. If a second round of five minutes is needed, then we will do that, and we will again report out in order. So, starting with the items on the agenda, 6:30 PM approval not required, under subdivision control law application, 10:25 for 70, Black Horse Lane. I believe Mr. Greg Gregory Morris of Morris Engineering will speak. Then the planning boarders, planning board members will speak, members of the public, legal counsel, and any other group that might be appropriate.
Excuse me. Ms. Glassmeyer, um, did you ask Paul Colery to vote on this, since we have a missing, two missing regular members as associate member?
Well, he just came on, and I did mention that if he arrived, he would be a member of this discussion.
Okay, good.
Thank you for that.
A voting, a voting member of the board for, for the purposes of filling in for missing members.
I upped him into that role. Mr. Morris, would you like to begin?
Sure, thank you, good evening. For the record, my name is Gregory Morrison, a registered engineer with Morris Engineering, representing the applicant Jack LLC, represented by Jack Livingston as the manager. This is an A&R application for property at 70 Black Horse Lane. It's approximately a 3.8 acre piece of land. If I can do a share screen, I will put the A&R plan up for everyone to review. Bear with me. Can you see that on the screen?
It's pretty tough to see that, can you make it larger, please?
Yes. So the, so the property is the black bold line here where my cursor is running again, incorporates approximately 3.8 acres. There's an existing home centrally located number 70, Black Horse Lane. Black Horse Lane, for reference, is at the bottom of the page here. It's an existing right-of-way which traverses right here. The proposal is to take the property, which is in the RB zoning district, into divide it into three lots. Each of the lots complies with the zoning requirements for 35,000 square feet of lot area and the frontage requirements of 50 feet minimum of frontage. Black Horse Lane itself is a way that was established. It was laid out on a subdivision plan dated 1936. I provided a copy of that plan to the planning board for the initial application. Since 1936, the planning board has endorsed A&R plans on this section of Black Horse Lane in 1961, 2017, 2018, and 2020. Black Horse Lane at this location is paved, has access to utilities, including water and electric. There is vital access provided to the frontage of each of these lots. There are no impediments to the buildable portions of these lots. We felt that it was entitled to endorsement because it has frontage on a way that predates the subdivision control law and that the ways of an adequate construction for the intended use being three single-family house lots. I turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by asking the planning board members if they have comments they would like to make. Clark Brewer.
Well, I think it makes sense for Greg to go through the other plans that he's got teed up on, on the, on the top of his screen. If he could just do a brief description of the other plans, the 36 plan, the 61 plan, the 2018 plan, just for some context.
Right, I'd be glad to do that. As I stated, this was a property that was laid out in 1936 originally. Showing you that 1936 plan here, you see this right-of-way that is Black Horse Lane, where it exists today. This house that's depicted here is number 70. So, the property that we're talking about is this land right here immediately adjacent to the house of number 70. This is the location of Black Horse Lane, this.
Greg, if I remember correctly, there's a Black Horse Lane that's a public way that ends where at the, at the front of this property. And then you're saying that there's a Black Horse Lane private way portion that is shown on this 1930, what is this? Is this is the 1936 plan or 61, 61? Okay, this is the 61 that, so there's something called a right-of-way that looks like there's a property line on the north side and a dashed line on the south side or the lower side.
Yeah, so this is actually, this is the 1936 plan that we have here.
Oh, it says 1961 in the upper right corner.
Right there, yep.
At least what I'm saying, made for Samuel Barto scale.
I'm looking at a different, at a different plan than you, hold on one sec.
And then it looks like it's handwritten.
Yeah, hold, hold on just a moment, let me get this 1936 plan back up then. Just bear with me, 1936. Do you see, do you see this plan?
Yeah, yeah, this one is for Florence Barto, 1936.
Yes, 1936.
The other one that we had up was the 61 plan.
Apologize for that, so looking at this here.
Can you focus in on that proposed right-of-way?
Yes, I am. So, right here, what you have is you have Black Horse Lane that comes up essentially to the entrance of this property. And at that location, that is where the road does transition from what was, what is a town or a public road to a private road. This section of Black Horse Lane, which is shown on this 36 plan, remains private to this day. It was never accepted by the town or taken ownership by the town. However, the town did take ownership of Black Horse Lane to the left of this or just off locus of this.
It's a, it's a public way that runs out to Summer Street?
So it ultimately terminates actually up here at house number 94, Black Horse Lane. There's a.
Black Horse Lane, the public way terminates at Summer Street, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So, this was the original layout for Black Horse Lane. And then what happened is in 1961, looking at this plan, this was endorsed by the planning board as an approval not required plan. And you'll see that it lays out that right-of-way, which was proposed in 1936, had been laid out, constructed at this point, and it divides this property further into lots A2, A1. There are several lots here, but what you notice is that the right-of-way comes up, and it actually curves ever so slightly to the northeast back onto this property. The planning board in 1961 endorsed this as an A&R approval not required plan. Fast forward to more recent times. In 2018 or thereabouts, my client had acquired the property. What they decided to do with it was to sell off two lots and then keep the existing home on a larger lot. And that's what we did with this 2018 plan. With access off of the private Black Horse Lane here, we created lots one and two. There's currently a home being built on lot two. Lot number one has a home that's going to be built imminently on lot one. Lot one and two have been sold off. My client no longer has control of those lots, but they still have control of house number 70, shown as lot A2R on this plan. That's the subject lot of the A&R that's before you today, is to take this lot A2R and divide this into the three lots that are depicted on this plan here, the 2021 plan that you have before you. Lots A, B, and C, again, all having a minimum of 50 feet of frontage on that Black Horse Lane private section of the roadway, having vital access and providing sufficient land area to comply with the zoning bylaw.
So I just have a couple of comments on this. What, what is the, the private way portion of Black Horse Lane? I, I, it, it looks like it's, that they're proposing to put a property line on somebody else's property. And it looks like instead of a way with, with deeded width, like some of the other private ways, it looks to me like it's, it's an easement across somebody's property. And I, I don't see anything that provides rights of passage across the area that says Charles L. Smith, 94, Black Horse Lane, that, that would allow this particular property to use this. I haven't seen any deeds that allow for the use of this private way. So, it, I, I, I think that the thinking back in 2018 was that you had existing lots that had merged over time and that the three lots and then the, the subdividing of Supper Island could be attached to specific lots, that that was a restoration of some rights that had been given back in 61. But, but I see this plan as a wholly new taking of frontage off of what appears to be somebody else's property with a, a private way that looks like it's an easement instead of a way with, with, with that something could take frontage from. Sure, I'm happy to discuss it, but I'd like to see what the other board members think. Oh, and I'm, I'm prepared to not, to vote to not endorse this.
Tom Callahan.
What, what's the difference between this and what was approved in 17, 18, and last year? What, what are you doing differently here? Would, would, would the former A&Rs to divide this lot and the two that you say have now been sold?
So, I, I heard a lot of information in Clark's questions there. I'll, I'll address Tom's first because it's a little quicker and easier. In 2018, my clients owned all of the property that you see here on this plan. And the purpose of this 2018 plan, which was endorsed, was to create lots one and two with frontage on Black Horse Lane at the bottom of the page here. And that was done granted where lots one and two were, there were previous lots at that location that were created on that 1961 plan, which as you see here, in 1961, there was a lot A1 and A2, neither of which had frontage onto the Black Horse Lane right-of-way. And so, that 1961 plan was effectively, we added frontage in 2018, reconfiguring those two lots, bringing frontage out to Black Horse Lane. Those two lots have been sold off. And so the purpose of tonight's A&R plan is to look at the remainder of the land, which is right here, this lot A2R, and to divide that into the three proposed lots, again, having frontage on that, on that same road that the previous endorsements have all found as adequate, and we're entitled to endorsement upon.
All right, so originally, originally, we have one piece of property. It's been divided three ways. Now you want to add two, you want to make five lots being served by this. And I, I, I have to dispute calling this Black Horse Lane beyond the point where it begin, you know, Black Horse Lane ends at your client's property. My, my recollection, a year ago, when I looked at this, that I looked at the plan from 1936, and I don't, I think it's a giant jump to a conclusion to say that this area, this, I, I believe it's nothing more than a common driveway is, is really part of Black Horse Lane. Proposed right-of-way doesn't make it part of Black Horse Lane. My recollection, I looked at the minutes, I think of Lauren from last year. I thought I, it didn't reflect this, but I thought I also was concerned that this was completely inadequate access. And, but I felt that it was constrained by the 2017 endorsement. I don't know if I should be so constrained anymore. I, this, this, this common driveway to me is inadequate in terms of being serviced by emergency vehicles and being a safe point of egress for now, will be five lots, in my view. And then if it is, if there's no rights to actually use it, if that's a legitimate issue, I know we were told by council last year that that wasn't our concern, but it seems to me you can't have actual frontage. It would be illusory if you don't have any rights to it. So, I, I'm really troubled by this. And, you know, I, I, I just, I guess I'm going to ask Carolyn eventually, you know, how constrained am I by what I consider to be past mistakes in endorsing previous A&Rs at this location? But I'm, I'm troubled by this one.
So if I may address one thing real quickly here. Looking closely at the location or the layout of the Black Horse Lane right-of-way.
Keep calling it Black Horse Lane if you'd like, but I don't agree that it's part of.
Let's call it the way, if you'd prefer. Looking at the way that was laid out prior to subdivision control law in the town of Cohasset. Looking at the way that's here, the way is defined, it has a width. It's defined as 20 feet wide. What you see is you see this thick black line that represents the property line here. That's the front property line or the front lot line of lots A, B, and C as they front along this way. The way does have, again, a defined width. It's labeled as private. And it's not untypical to have a private way in the town of Cohasset or any town for that matter.
There is, and I'm, I'm not saying it is, that, that's, that's not the point. The point is whether it is safe and adequate to serve five houses.
There is a defined and recorded at the registry of deeds agreement for access to that way, which includes the maintenance of that way. It includes dividing up percentages for paying for maintenance and whatnot of that way, that it's to be used as these lots get divided. It is referenced as the way, it is fully intended. And that agreement that was in place, it does predate my client. It also predates the Smith property. They both acquired it with that agreement in place on record at the registry of deeds. It's referenced in both of their deeds already. So the rights are there, and the agreements are in place to make sure that it is adequately maintained and paid for.
All right, but how, how many, at the end of this, you're, you're creating five lots. Then there's Mr. Smith. Are there anybody else that's serviced by this, this way? Because this, it just seems to me that, I, I, I understand that our common driveway regulations are overly generous on how many lots can be served by this. We're going to change that, but I haven't changed it yet. But this, this seems to be getting around the subdivision control law. I mean, there is going to be at least six, possibly more, if there's further A&Rs being served by this, this driveway. So, I know, I know it says it's 20 feet wide, but I've been out there. It's not, I don't believe it's 20 feet wide. And I, you know, I would love to hear what the fire department has to say about whether this is adequate to serve five houses.
Hey, hey, Tom, I think he's, I think they're saying that the area for the, the driveway is 20 feet as an easement, but the, you know, the pavement, pavement looks like it's 10 or 11 feet.
12, 12 feet for the pavement. And the fire department has signed off on the building permit on lot two of the former A, and the former A&R plan there. I don't know that they've signed off on lot one yet, but I expect that they will be. There's a fire hydrant along the frontage of this property. It's, the, the access is there. It is a 12-foot paved surface. It, the right-of-way itself, though, is 20 feet wide, which is not uncommon that the right-of-way be wider than the paved surface.
Just a follow-up comment. I, I, I mean, I think that there is access, and you may have legal deeded access across Charles Smith's property, but I don't see his property providing frontage. So I think this is, this is a subdivision, if you want to further divide the lot. In fact, I think the 2018 A&R, which I was on, I, I think I, I felt like because there were existing lots, that that provided some, some rights for the A&R, some reasoning for the A&R. But I, I still think it was a mistake to have allowed frontage to be taken from this other person's property that's got an easement and a common driveway labeled Black Horse Lane as if it was the public portion of Black Horse Lane.
The, the planning board has endorsed four A&R plans on this section of Black Horse Lane previous to today.
And then, and those planning boards could have all made mistakes. And that's why I asked, that I'm going to ask council, how, how constrained are we? I felt constrained a year ago. I would have, I would have issued a negative endorsement a year ago, but I, I felt we might have been bound by what had been decided previously. But I, arguing that some mistakes were made doesn't help you, in, you know, my opinion and in your, in your argument to justify this.
So let me move, please, to Mr. Colery to see if he has.
And Lauren, your hand up.
Okay, well, I can't see Lauren because of the, the, the map being up there. So was, if Lauren was first, Lauren, please go ahead.
Thank you, I'll be quick. I just wanted to let you know that in a previous discussion in the agenda setting session with the chair earlier this week, you had requested that I reach out to Chip Smith because he had actually indicated interest in this site in the past and given his proximity in the land there. So we did reach out to Chip Smith, and I actually saw just a moment ago that after work hours today before the meeting, we had a couple of other neighbors weigh in with concern. I'm not sure if they use the way or what the situation is there, but I just want to notify you that there are folks in the neighborhood who are concerned. We're getting some questions actually coming from the neighborhood that we can address when the time is appropriate. And then I just have a question to actually direct to council. If it was believed to be that this was deeded access that was actually on another property owner's land, would they have to be a co-applicant applicant in something of this nature?
Well, I think anytime you use anybody else's property and claim it as part of your project, yes, you would need another applicant. You'd need that other property owner to be a co-applicant. But I think the bigger issue is, is, is use of somebody else's property, is that actually frontage? You know, if that, that sounds to me like that is really what the question is here. Is this really a right-of-way that multiple parties have, have acts, have rights to use? Is this really something that is just part of Charles Smith's property? Is this just a driveway that somehow or other is now being used for frontage? In which case, no, it, you know, it has to be, in this case, we have to go back and actually see that this truly, this portion of the way here is truly a 1936 pre-subdivision way and not a driveway, not an easement or anything like that.
Thank you for that clarification. Paul Colery.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. And after council spoke, I don't really have anything else to add. I, I think that it seems like there'd be more clarification and, and giving everyone more answers to many questions that seem to be attached to this. So that's all I got.
All right, thank you. My comment relates to the fact that I went out there and I actually measured the, the physical site across the property. And the variation in the width of the, of the piece of property that we're speaking about, that looks as if it is used for vehicular traffic, varies between nine feet and 12 feet. So it's highly irregular. The second thing I'd like to say is that the fire hydrant was recently added. It's not something that has a longstanding existence on the site. It was being part of the, the process of, of this continuing development. So, that's another prop, that's another point I'd make. And then finally, I'd like to say that on the 1936 map, it says proposed. It does not say it is, you know, a finally established of right-of-way. So it's, it, it is indefinite in the, in the earliest map. All right, Tom Callahan.
Yeah, I just want to point, I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Smith's deed from 1992. And the references to a right-of-way, now, this would take more time for me to look at plans and match the words to something to, on a plan. But it's referring to a right-of-way that goes to Cedar Street and South Main Street. Cedar is a short little dead end off of South Main Street. So, in other words, going in the other direction, not towards Black Horse Lane. So I'm not so sure he's subject to any right-of-way here, unless I dig into this description more. But, you know, it's, this deed is made up of three parcels of land, and two of them refer to this right-of-way that goes out to Cedar Lane, the other direction behind him, not to Black Horse Lane. So I'm, you know, with all due respect, Greg, I'm not so sure we, we have a clear legal right here. I would have to then look at your client's deed and see what that says about having any access to a right-of-way. But, you know, if you, who, I could quickly look it up while we're sitting here, but.
Okay, so I see Clark Brewer.
Yeah, so I just, to repeat, what, while he may have deeded access across this, this other butter's property, the A&R approval not required under subdivision control laws, it requires the planning board look at two things. Access, real access, and frontage. Frontage. And I don't see frontage here. I think this is a perfect example. Of a property that needs to create frontage. With a subdivision.
If, if I may interject, there are, there are two right of ways over the, the Chip Smith property. You're referring to one of them, Tom. There is another one that goes out to Black Horse. But secondly, my, my client. Um, has logged in and had his hand raised, specifically his attorney, attorney Jeffrey DeLisi. Uh, if he could be added as a participant, I think Mr. DeLisi has a couple of things he would like to add regarding this matter as well.
Let me first, um, see whether the planning board members have any further comments. If not, then we can enter into the, uh, public period of comment. Mr. DeLisi.
Hi, uh, thank you, Amy, members of the board. Um, just a couple of points because these are complex issues and I'm happy that, uh. Carolyn is, is on the call tonight. I, number one, there is deeded access, there's deeded rights in a deed, um, from 1961. The lot over which the, uh, the road is shown on the 1961 plan, that little lot F. Was conveyed in 1961 and the, um, grantor reserve back. Uh, the right to use, uh, that which had at that point already been constructed. Um, for purposes of, uh, all reasons why streets and roads are used in the town of Cohasset. So we can get that information over to, um, Carolyn. I'm sure Carolyn would want to take a look at these legal issues. I don't think that it's appropriate that tonight for you guys to be voting, given these issues. But I wanted to raise a, a, a completely separate issue, all right? And, and that is that. Under the subdivision control law. Okay, there's a definition of the word subdivision. You guys have been through this. We've been through this on multiple occasions. And what it says is a subdivision is a division of land into two or more, uh, blocks. And then it goes on to say what a subdivision is not. And what, what it says is a subdivision is not. Lots that have frontage on a public street, which this is not because, um, Tom is. As you're pointing out, you don't want to call it a, you know, a road. Um, it, it, it's not, okay? Or lots, um, that, um, have frontage on a road approved in accordance with the subdivision control law. Or, um, lots that have frontage on a way in existence. Prior to the adoption of the, the subdivision control law, which is adequate. And that's the third one is what we've been discussing tonight. But the second one is something that I think, um, I would, I'd like an opportunity to talk to Carolyn about. Because this lot was laid out and recorded on a plan in the 1930s. This, this, this road, um, this, this plan, the 30s showed a division of land. A subdivision essentially with frontage on these proposed roads, no different than any other subdivision plan. And under the subject control law. Um, Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81, double F, FF. The first paragraph addresses circumstances where essentially subdivision plans are grandfathered. And what it says, it, um, in a, in, in, in essence, is that if a lot, if, if. If a plan is recorded prior to 1952 with the Registry of Deeds. And the year 1952 was chosen because that's the year that the subdivision control law, I, actually, I'm not sure why it was chosen. I. But it uses the word 1952. And what, what it says is that that. The, the lot shown on that plan shall have the same validity. As if it were approved in accordance with the subdivision control law. And so there's actually a case at the land court, um, which talks about this. In, in reference to registered land, which Section 81 FF also deals with. And that's Jack's Timer versus Visco and the, um, citation is for Land Court Reporter 71. And what it says is, is that. If you're protected under this 81 FF. And, 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 and the. Shall have the same validity as if it were a subdivision plan. Then what we're talking about now is deriving of, of, a, a frontage for lots. That are approved not, uh, as ways in existence prior to the adoption of the subject control under the third exception. But under the second exception, which is under, under, um, having frontage on roads approved in accordance with the subject control law. Um, I've run into this issue, um, uh, in another town. Uh, Barbara St. Andre, one of the councils in, in town count, uh, in, in, had written a memo. On this exact issue, which I happen to have a copy of, and I've read the case. So I think that there's kind of a foothold here on the issue of frontage. And I know it's kind of a technical legal argument. I don't think we should be, you know, I think town council should have an opportunity to review this and talk to me. Um, and you know, if you, if, if, as far as, uh, a quality of access, you have a 12 foot wide paved road. Which has hydrants and has been signed off by the fire department. I, I'm not sure that you want to say that that's not adequate, given some of the other roads, especially in town that have been. Which are not nearly as qualitative. So just with all of that said. I would recommend either a continuance to allow myself to speak with, uh, counsel. Or, um, we could withdraw without prejudice and come back. Uh, either one, whatever the pleasure of the board, but I do think it's, it makes sense to vet out the title issue a little bit. Vet out this particular argument I'm making with respect to 81 FF, which I think has been. Already endorsed by the land court and, um. And then we can take it from there.
So just before anyone else speaks, I did start the public commentary and I want to carry that out. Before any further discussion of planning board members, so please hold your comments and let's the public, um, uh, participate.
Thank you. Um, we got a, a comment from Paul Canny of 10 Black Horse Lane. Uh, the question is what documentation exists or has been provided? To show that Black Horse Lane continues up to the, the home at 94 Black Horse Lane. It was proposed in 1936. But when was it legally declared as a town road? And why are there no land deeds identifying that right of way as Black Horse Lane? The only plan that identifies it as Black Horse Lane is the one submitted by the applicant.
Um, just a minute. Are there other, um, members of the public, um, Lauren, that would like to speak at this moment?
There, um, there aren't any indicated in the chat. So if anyone else has joined us since the last announcement, if you'd like to address the board, please insert your name and address. Into the, uh, question and answer function.
So let's just give them a minute.
Certainly. Um, so I'm not seeing anyone else. And I do, I have another, just a, a procedural question for our counsel. Um, given the 20 white, 21 day timeline for the A and R filing, is the board, would you recommend that they act tonight? So that there isn't any sort of risk of constructive approval?
I, I, I think from what you just heard from Attorney DeLisi, um, you don't, you don't have to act tonight. Um, because I think quite frankly, if you had to act tonight, I would expect that this would be a denial. And I think what counsel is asking for is, well, let's look at these issues a little bit more. Before we go there. So I think what we would want to do is, um, take Attorney DeLisi at his word that this is. Um, they are agreeing to, um, an extension of the 21 days for the board to act. And I suppose we could always follow up tomorrow and get that in writing if necessary. Um, or as Attorney DeLisi said, he could also request to withdraw without prejudice. Get some of these issues, uh, worked out. Provide the information to me so that I can take a look at this and provide some advice to the board and then come back. Um, when those issues are resolved.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to ask individual board members, um, you can see that, uh, our counsel has, uh. Described two options. Let me ask first, is there continuing conversation on this or do we wish to act upon one or the other? Described, um, decision points, um, that Ms. Murray provided us. Clark Brewer.
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with, um. Putting this off, provided that, uh, that there's no danger of constructive approval. So. If the, if it's withdrawn without prejudice and. Um, uh, our town council and the applicant's council has time to review the. Um, relevant documents, then, then I think that's fine. And if it's going to come back, um. And that those issues are resolved, um, to the extent possible and the board can be advised properly. Then I, I think that it can come on our agenda another time.
All right, let me ask Tom Callahan, what is your perspective?
I, I, I think this should be withdrawn without prejudice. Um. You know, I'm sitting here looking at records at the registry of deeds. It requires some time that we don't have tonight, obviously. I, I would like to see this opinion from this other attorney, St. Andre. I'd like to see this case referred to Jeff. I, and quick glance at 81 FF, I somewhat disagree with your interpretation of it. But, uh, the current owner's deed doesn't refer to a right of way per se. It refers to the 61 agreement. The 61 agreement refers to rights away, but. You have to compare plans and what the lots were designated at the time of that agreement to know exactly where that right of way is. So this will take time. But I think all of that needs to be looked at and analyzed by our town council. And by the applicant's council. And, uh, I, I would certainly like to see all the, the raw legal information you're looking at. Uh, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no, I think that that is proven wise and I'll just request the continuance, I mean, the withdrawal right now without prejudice.
Please, before you do that, I want to give the other planning board member an opportunity to state their opinion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think there was one more question. It appears that there's a chat function and a Q and A function if, if Lauren. So I don't know if that.
See, there's a new one. Um, Lauren, do you want to read that?
Yes, um, we have one from George McGoldrick of Border Street. Can they answer Mr. Canny's question? And then Mr. Canny entered some additional questions. Um, uh, what we'll do is we have these items as the chat as part of the record and we will circulate this, uh, to our legal counsel. She reviews the additional information so that these items can be addressed as well for the next time this comes back to the planning board.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind, Lauren, would you please read that in case somebody is only listening to this on the phone?
Sure. So the second question, uh, from Mr. Canny at 10 Black Horse Lane. As a follow-up, if the existing deed allows for this right of way to continue to Cedar Streets out slash South Main Street, what is to prevent those landowners who abut that right of way on Cedar? From subdividing their land and using it as frontage, presenting this as a problem that could continue for years?
Can I just, I can jump in on that because I have an answer.
Just a minute. I, I will call you. Uh, okay. Uh, thank you for that, Lauren. Uh, Mr. DeLisi.
Yeah, no, it is just the premise of the question is, is Greg walked you through what that, uh, the, 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 the way. Uh, and how it kind of curves gently to the north up to that property. It doesn't meet, this, this way. Is completely and totally separate from the way shown on the plan out to Cedar Street and down the South Main. That's a completely separate issue that has nothing to do with this. That's Mr. Smith's property. These, these, the, this is not joined with that. And I'm, I just, I, I just wanted to mention it for purposes of this meeting and certainly I'll follow up on that issue in greater detail with counsel.
All right then, Lauren, would you like to summarize where we are? So we, um, and, um, then. Would we be in a position to make a motion to allow withdrawal with no prejudice? And if that, if that was the case, would somebody consider doing that? But first, Lauren, you want to summarize?
Yeah, so, um, you can make a motion to accept the, uh, withdrawal without prejudice and we can file something to that effect, the town clerk for this case. And then, um, we at that point would wait for the applicant to resume with, uh, return with the information that's been requested tonight. That that with our counsel and then anticipate, you know, another filing, depending on how that situation was resolved.
All right, so we will not need a date from you for any further contact. It will be investigated and then there will be a. Um, a proposal made back to us about seeing them again. Um, can I get a member of the planning board to make a motion then?
I'll move that, uh, based on what Lauren just outlined.
I'll second that. I don't, I don't know if there needed to be more said, but I'll second that.
All right, then I'm going to do a roll call vote. Clark Brewer.
Hi.
Tom Callahan.
All right.
Paul Coleri.
Aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye. Thank you, everyone, on behalf of the Black Horse Lane A and R. We'll see you again.
Thank you very much.
We now have before us a second A and R, not required, um, for, um. 42 Atlantic Avenue property. Mr. John Cavanaro will be representing, I believe, representing the, uh, property owner. So Mr. Cavanaro will speak, then the pub, planning board members will speak, and then that, if there are any public members that will speak, they will be speaking after the planning board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much. Um. I am here this evening on behalf of Sean Doherty and his wife Suzanne, who own 42 Atlantic Ave. It's a vacant lot, uh, adjacent to their home at 50 Atlantic Ave. Uh, I will share screen if that's okay.
Yes.
Pull the plan up. So, um, this is the property, uh, as I mentioned, the Dohertys live at 50 Atlantic Ave. And they own a vacant lot that is comprised of about 2.6 acres. That's adjacent to their property at four, at 50, and this is addressed as 42 Atlantic Ave. This property is, is accessed from Newtonville Road and Dean Road that pass from Atlantic Ave. Uh, around the property in both ways. So, uh, as I mentioned, these are two existing lots. Uh, Lot B is four acres, that's 50 Atlantic Ave, where the Dohertys reside. And they currently own the second lot, which is about 2.6 acres. The purpose of this plan is not to create any new lots, uh, but rather to reduce the size of the building lot. Which now will become Lot E. And they're creating parcel F, which is about 1.1 acres. And that will be added to their house at 50 Atlantic to, uh, have a total acreage of about 5.2 acres. So that's the purpose of this plan. It's not to create any new lots. It's to re-divide an existing lot to make it a little bit smaller, but still conforming. Uh, well, in excess of the 60,000 square foot minimum. Uh, and they're essentially adding more land to their existing oversized lot.
All right, thank you. Are you finished for the moment?
Yes, thank you.
Right, thank you. Then let me ask planning board by alphabet, Clark Brewer.
Um, uh, John, a quick question about this. Um, i- is the, the lot that currently. Is Lot E and parcel F right now? Are those under separate or is that under separate ownership that has not merged with Lot B?
Uh, no, that's, that's actually a conforming lot.
It's a, a real estate, it's in a real estate trust or something like that, that, so it's separate ownership? They haven't merged?
Well, they, they wouldn't merge their, their separate lots.
Would, would they be protected under eight, eight point three B or something like that?
It's, it's a conforming lot. So it's a separate lot that's conforming.
Right, but my understanding is that, um, that lots under common ownership merge. Is that only if they're non-conforming? In some way?
That, that's my understanding. I'm, I'm not a, an attorney, but.
Okay, um, i- if that's the, if that's the case, then, um, I, I, I guess whatever the frontage is for, for this lot. It, um, while it's reduced, it certainly appears that it's on a way. And whatever the access is, it appears that there's access, even though I don't know if there's access that, um. Would be deeded to this lot or deeded to both lots separately or, um. Or as a, as a class. Um. I guess I'd ask, uh, council what they think of the issues that I may have raised so far.
Certainly, Mr. Brewer. Um, I, I, first of all, I don't see that there is any merger. Because merger would only apply to non-conforming, so undersized lots trying to. Um, aggregate undersized lots so that we could become more conforming or even possibly conforming. Um, so as I see this. What, what will be left is Lot E. certainly seems to have frontage off of Newtonville Road and/or Dean Road, if not both. Parcel F seems to have frontage along Dean Road, but also as I understand it, parcel F now is going to be joined with Lot B, if I heard that correctly.
That's correct.
That the intent is not, that parcel F is not to be a separate buildable lot?
That's correct. As noted on the plan, that parcel F is not a buildable lot.
Right. And I know that is in very, very tiny print on the screen, but I think that might be worth highlighting. That parcel F will just be merged with Lot B, simply augment the size of Lot B and not to be a separate, separate buildable lot.
So the purpose of this plan is to divide Lot D, show them a recorded plan endorsed by the planning board, which is now, Lot D is basically Lot E and parcel F into Lot E and parcel F. Parcel F is to be combined with Lot B currently owned by Doherty. Parcel F is not a legal building lot.
All right, does Andrew question, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, so I guess I, I would say the, the lot, the, this lot E conforms to the area requirements. And even if what is shown as frontage on Newtonville Road and Dean Road may actually be abutting other lots, it is the same configuration that the, that the lot has had since its initial creation. And I, I, I basically think that, that what is, what is frontage and access for this lot remains unchanged from when it was originally created.
That's correct.
There, therefore, I, I don't think there's I, I don't think there's a reason to deny this for approval not required under subdivision control laws.
All right, thank you. Mr. Callahan?
Did we deal with this recently? This looks familiar.
No.
Must have been, it might have been another property on that nearby.
The last one was twenty fourteen.
Yeah, no, that, that's all. I, I, I have nothing, no objection to this.
All right, thank you. Mr. Colery?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cavanaro, if you could zoom in on Lot E above that dotted line and, and maybe members of the public might have questions about what it says there. I saw it on my computer, but I couldn't see it there when, when it was zoomed out a bit.
Sure. So when this lot, these, both of these lots were created initially, the abutter to, which formerly lived at twenty Atlantic Ave essentially filed suit against former property owner and they settled to put a, just a limit of development onto this lot. And so they, they came up with a demarcation line and it's consistent with the topography out here to restrict this lot to having only a single, one single family home and that it can only be built in a certain location. And so that's, that's the limit of where the single family home can be built. So this is, this is a restricted lot as to where it can be developed under a deed.
Understood, thank you. And I have no further questions.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Colery. That was helpful and I was trying to figure out what the dotted line was. I have no further comments. Can I get a motion to approve?
We endorse A and R, so I'll say motion to endorse.
Tom?
Our as submitted.
Tom?
Um, go back, can we go back to the plan a minute?
Sure.
So the, the, the frontage is on this Dean Road?
It looks like Newtonville Road.
Newtonville, Newtonville and Dean, yep.
And it's ten feet wide?
It's a twenty foot right of way. This is, this is a whole neighborhood up on Newtonville Road.
Yeah, I know.
Again, we're not creating a lot here. This is not the creation of a, of a new building lot.
No, all right.
For the comments?
Nope.
There's a motion.
Second.
Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Tom Callahan?
Aye.
Paul Colery?
Aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A and R passed. Let's move on to the next item. What time is it? We're a little bit off. Lauren, can you please discuss the next item?
Yeah, so just as a reminder also for anyone watching, the practice that we've been doing at the planning board lately is all continued public hearings are continued to six thirty PM on whatever the regularly scheduled planning board meeting date is. And that way, public hearings will begin no earlier than six thirty PM, but we do have some flexibility in our timing. So we're not actually early. We can begin this agenda item, even if it's before the time, because agenda times are approximate. So with that said, the next item on the agenda is a site plan review. It's a continued hearing for eight oh eight Chief Justice Cushing Highway. They've actually requested a continuance to October twentieth, due to the fact that they're awaiting completion of traffic study data. So we're going to continue that immediately. We're not going to deliberate on that this evening and that'll be October twentieth at six thirty PM.
Motion to continue as indicated.
Um, can I get a second? Clark Brewer? Tom Callahan?
Hi.
Paul Colery?
Aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye. Let's move on to the next item. We're reopening the public hearing for a site plan review on twenty, twenty-five and thirty Situate Hill. Mr. Walter Sullivan, is Mr. Sullivan present or could someone inform us how this conversation is going to go forward?
Yes, I'll let you know that I'm just in the process of, there's a, quite a number of them here. So I'm just uploading them one by one, but we have, we have Mark Trider, Chris Nowak, Walter Sullivan. Let's see, who else do we have? I believe, yes, there's Sevy. And I think you also want Michael, yes, there's Michael Kim. Is there anyone else I'm missing?
I, I'm going to look at the attendee list. I don't, Tom Makelees, if you could.
Certainly, all right. And then I will turn it over to Mr. Trider to get started. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. So we left our last meeting looking for some clarification and action as it relates to our parking count calculation. And we took some time and convened a meeting also with Building Inspector John Howland to clarify our approach and find within the bylaws some language that we feel pretty clearly supports our calculation and exclusion of entryways and bathrooms from the net floor area, therefore making our parking count of eighty spaces compliant with only seventy-six being necessary under the approach that we documented here in a, in a memo and a calculation that I hope you guys all had the ability or time to be able to review. The links are all within the memo. I have them up on my screen if we wanted to review them, but it basically boils down to within the, the pre-seed to the definition section of the bylaw. There's an area that says for any undefined terms within the bylaws, we go to the state building code to find definition for such a term. And really, the, the ambiguous term or the, or the term that was creating some consternation throughout the group or the board, I should say, as far as our parking count calculation was areas usable for human occupancy, which we went and found definitions within the building code and then further supported by definitions within the, the, the co-hasset bylaws themselves about use and primary use where that, that substantiate our, our approach. And so to, to further bolster that position, we worked with Inspector Howland on some revisions to our floor plans that will be submitted through the building permit application process and, and verified accordingly to better distinguish and define that entryway area and bathroom area as unusable or not, not occupiable space and therefore clearly excluded from the calculation. So hopefully you guys have that. I have it available for screen share if you'd like to look at any of the codes or the refinements to the floor plans themselves. Architects here are able to speak to them as well. Go ahead, Clark.
Just a quick follow-up comment on, on Mark. I, I have reviewed those and since I, I think I, I was substantially responsible for raising that as a clarification request, I have reviewed it and I think the response is adequate and adequately proves that, that the, that the parking provided meets the requirements of our zoning bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, are there additional members of your team, Mr. Trider, who would like to speak?
I think Chris from VHB could quickly speak to the transmission of some peer review comments. I believe that all have been settled, but Chris, why don't you just explain where we are as far as that letter transmission between you and TEC, if they're here. And I'm not sure they are, but I think that would be helpful for the board to hear before we move on to where we want to go as far as our presentation.
Sure. Is the board's aware, there was a lengthy comment letter that was submitted on the original plan set by TEC. The majority of those issues were addressed in a letter dated August nineteenth, I believe. There was a second letter issued by TEC with a few items that remain to be clarified. Most being minor in nature, I would say, or fairly technical. Provided some supplemental information that responded to and clarified those additional requests. I think there was only one item that we remained in. We didn't necessarily agree with TEC's recommendation. I think everything else we were able to incorporate into the plans or agree to incorporate into the plans. The one item that I was not in agreement with TEC on was related to the stormwater management system design. They had requested that a gate valve be placed on the drain line upstream of the detention basin. Due to the nature of the facility, it's, it's a low turnover, a low volume parking lot. There's no gas filling vehicles within the parking lot or oil changing or anything that would be considered. You know, hazardous activity, the high potential for a spill, which is where you would typically see something like that. And, and in those instances, you're usually activating the gate valve prior to initiating one of those one of those activities, fueling or, or, or oil changing. In this instance, we wouldn't have the opportunity to close that valve ahead of time. So anything would be reactionary and on a, on a drain line the size of what's proposed. It takes a while. It, it, it's not an instantaneous activity. It's, somebody has to go down there and manually close the valve and it, it takes a considerable amount of time. So we don't feel it would be effective. We don't feel it would be warranted in this instance. Everything else we're, we're in agreement with and, and we've either addressed or have agreed to, to address.
Lauren, do we have any further comments?
So I just wanted to address, Madam Chair, I see your question in the chat. TEC is not present with us tonight and I would say that Chris's summary of the comments and the exchanges is accurate. There was, they were pretty satisfied. Most of their comments had been addressed. The other item, it kind of up to the board's decision on how they want to proceed with that. As you know, this is sort of an advisory document from the peer review. And I would suggest that if the board didn't want to make a specific determination, you could always condition that, that be subject to, you know, the town's approval, whether it be in the inspector or engineer and whoever be the appropriate staff person to work with the applicant on that. And then I will just note that if there's additional review of material that was recently submitted after the last peer review letter, that we wouldn't need to request an upage and fee from the applicant because we've already sort of hit the ceiling on what the deposit was for this project review. So I just wanted to let you know that. I, I was notified that this morning and I said that I would notify the board of that. So if there is any additional review required, that would be something that we would need to, you know, bring up to speed.
No problem.
All right, what, is there anyone else from the applicant who would like to speak? Or otherwise I will move on to the planning board members.
That's all we have at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Clark, would you like to speak further or have you made your statement?
Yeah, just a couple of, of quick things. First of all, I like this project. I think it's a, a, a very creative use of the, the property. I'd like to see as many connections outside of the property made, you know, like sidewalks that could be joined up with other sidewalks and make safe passage to the train station. For example, worked through by the applicant with his neighbors as a, as a, as a way to maybe find mutual, mutual benefits for that particular area. You know, and I'll bring as an example, there, the, the Hingham Lumber has a kind of back door that empties out onto Crocker Lane. And I think it's kind of good that you can go from like the top of the hill, the soccer field back into Hingham Lumber sometimes. I'm not suggesting that you do this. I'm just using it as an example on how multiple property owners have a mutually advantaged transportation network. And maybe, maybe a pedestrian net, expanded pedestrian network is something that you could look at with your, with your neighbors in the future. I don't, I don't see conditioning approval based on that, just a suggestion. And then another suggestion that has come to mind that I have not mentioned before, and I know you guys are groaning all of a sudden, you're like, oh. Is that, that this subdivision was created and predicated on creating frontage for multiple lots. Now that you've combined the frontage, it is entirely possible that this cul-de-sac, this large expanse of asphalt could be reconfigured or consolidated or reduced or in somehow, somehow repurposed. Again, I can't see making a condition other than working with the landowner and of the whoever has fee in, in the cul-de-sac, in the road at this point and who they're buying the lots from. And third and final, and this is minor and things that I've talked about before, it, it is important that everything that is a part of the project meet both the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board and the Arch, Americans with Disability Act requirements. M A A B in the Massachusetts side, that's a, that's a actual code. ADA is like a code, but it, it's a civil, a civil violation. Generally speaking, as architects, we, we conform to both codes and the most restrictive one is the one that we use as a, as a basis for design. But again, I like this project. I'd like to recommend that we close the public hearing and if we need deliberations, that we do those as quickly as we can.
So let me allow the other planning board members first to speak. Tom Callahan?
Well, I, I'll, I'll agree with Clark that I think we're at a point we can close this hearing. If you remember, last time we agreed that Lauren was going to take first crack at a draft decision here and I submitted some conditions already. Seven conditions. I'll just let the applicant know that one concerns the parking, but I'm going to amend that one in light of the resolution that's been arrived at. I'm concerned about the intersection of three A and the road. I want to see that the road is fully finished and ensure that that is done. And I just want to make the applicant aware that, you know, we I just want to make the applicant aware that, you know, we we changed Article 11 to the zoning bylaw last spring. And no site work and land clearing activities can take place until permits are issued. One of the things that that bylaw was intended to change was to stop having land alteration take place before any permit was issued and then it becomes a fait complet by the time you apply for a permit. So I just want you to be very conscious of the new Article 11 of our zoning bylaw. So other than that, I agree, we should close this. We can debate conditions. I understand I'm the only one who submitted conditions, at least in writing. So you know, everybody should do so and we should be deliberating on the conditions at our next opportunity.
All right, Mr. Thank you for that. Tom, Mr. Cleary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom, you said there was seven, but I think you only listed or talked about three. Were there other things that you wanted to put out?
One, one, one was a generic about being subject to other decisions and permits, mostly the stormwater permit. One was speaking about what would be a major modification or a minor, you know, some stand, you know. I consider those standard that would apply to anything, but I mostly the substance I focused on parking, the clearing and the finishing of the roadway and the some safety issues at the intersection with three.
So that leads me to my question, and I'm not sure if your engineers are present. Maybe that is VHB. So it's been my experience that a lot of lots that are but state roads like three A. And I know it's not on your property, but the neighbor's property. It appears that the grass rolls like right down. And yeah, I agree with Clark. First off, I love the project. I think it's brilliant use of the space. I agree with Clark. It'd be nice if we could connect some way to public transportation for the tenants as well as the guests of tenants, I guess. But does the property line go right out to the street or does the state own like the first six to 10 feet with like a municipal easement? Usually that's what I find in different communities, especially along state roads, not to mention the little streets and public ways we have in our own town. But can anyone off the top of their head answer that question?
Man, I think that's best for you, if you don't mind.
I think Chris could probably try to chime in on the property line as well, but I would say that Mass dot probably owns a few feet of that right away beyond the street, but I don't have that information in front of me.
I'm just I'm only mentioning it because I know that that's a big part of the safety that's been brought up about this location and some traffic coming on and off of three A. And if we could, you know, potentially bring that burn back a little bit. I know in maybe the first presentation, it was said that that's the neighbor's property and we can't do anything about that. I understand, but as a town, maybe the town could maybe start to look at the three A corridor, you know. It would be nice if all of those businesses could get some potential pedestrian traffic to and from the train station, you know, and if that's, you know, if this is and I'm not saying that this would be a condition on you, but I think it's something that we should all start to look at and think about as a planning board and as a town and, you know, as businesses, we want to support your business and bring as much traffic to your site as we can, either by foot or vehicle and something to think about and maybe Lauren and the rest of us can look into that. But I was just wondering if if at a quick glance, you guys might have noticed, looking at plot plans, that that grass that comes off of the front of that by the brass kettle sign actually encroaches on the state property and then we could put up potential retaining wall or, you know, that that's all I have. And it seems like Lauren might have answered to my question.
Miss Lynn.
So I have a bit of an answer to your question. The town is actually working with the state right now. Planning for the north section of three A on the transportation improvement program. So I believe that we do have that data available. I don't have it tonight, but I can get you that information because we've been working with actually the peer reviewer who worked on this project, TEC on that project as well through our engineering department. So I can provide whatever information is associated with that that we have already. And then in terms of process, I just recommend the board, if you wish, what I could do is I have already some proposed conditions that Tom Callahan sent over. If any of the other members wanted to send ones over that I can incorporate into a draft, I could then circulate that next week. So you have a week to review and ahead of our next regularly scheduled planning board meeting, which would be October 20th, and we could resume the deliberation at that time and sort of have a working draft that we could edit as similar to how we've done with other decisions.
Mr. Brewer.
Yeah, does does counsel think this is an acceptable time to close the public hearing and then deliberate at our next meeting with any conditions that are come forward?
I think it's always appropriate to close the public hearing when you think there is nothing more, like no additional information that you're looking for. And it doesn't sound like there's additional information that that the board's requesting. If there was any more, you know, need for public input, and I know from our last few meetings on this particular topic, there have been a number of consultants and parties involved, but there hasn't been much public input. So I I think we're probably at a point where it is safe to close the public hearing and just move on to deliberations.
All right, so just.
Night or at a future meeting?
You you could do it tonight. Or if you want to continue it one last time, just in case there's anything more to come in. But I'm not hearing a need for any further information or for any further clarification or, you know, plans or anything to be submitted. It sounds like you have run, come to the end of the line.
So I haven't asked for, asked Lauren whether or not there's any public members that would like to make comments.
There's no one that's indicated that they'd wish to speak to us at this time.
All right, so let me get the pleasure of the board. Clark Brewer, would you indicate what your preference is?
I I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing portion and and either deliberate tonight or put this on our next available for putting together final conditions and whatever deliberation there is.
All right, thank you. Tom Callahan.
That's emotional. Second.
It well, it isn't exactly a motion because I was trying to give everybody a chance to say something. So Paul Cleary.
I have nothing to add.
All right, I have nothing to add either. So.
The motion would be to close the public hearing of of the site plan review.
May I get a second?
Second.
Clark Brewer.
I.
Tom Callahan.
Hi.
Paul Cleary.
I.
Glass Meyer. I thank you very much. Thank you all. And we will now go to the question of whether or not we wish to deliberate now or do we want to take Laura's suggestion and combine all the materials that we've already received and any other materials that would come from the planning board members and allow her to put together a list of conditions and that we take that up at our next meeting. Paul Cleary.
So sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair. I was just curious. Lauren said our next meeting was the 20th. I thought we had a meeting next Wednesday as well.
We do.
That's for zoning stuff.
Yes, we added our typically our regularly scheduled calendar of meetings was tonight and the 20th for our twice a month meeting. We added the 13th to accommodate the special town meeting hearings because of the short time window of warrant season that we weren't going to be able to address it starting on the 20th.
Okay, but this would go on to the 20th agenda.
That's correct.
Right, thank you.
So I asked whether or not there was an inclination on the part of the board members to pursue the recommendation that Miss Lynn provided us, which was to consolidate all the information that has been collected and turned into conditions and bring that back to us in two weeks where we could further deliberate on those conditions and move this forward. Clark Brewer. Clark, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I'll make a motion to deliberate on the 20th, starting at 6:30.
All right, Clark Brewer.
I.
Tom Callahan.
Hi.
Paul Cleary.
Hi.
You Glass Meyer. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your persistence and your good humor.
Likewise, thank you.
Thank you all. And I'll send you the conditions as well so that you can take a look in advance for the next time.
Much appreciated.
All right. So thank you, board members. We're now just about at eight o'clock, which we can then entertain a an informal discussion on 55 South Main. Lauren, Lynn first.
We can actually do that now because it's an informal discussion. It's not a scheduled hearing. But also just to note that we're actually going to continue that to the 20th as well because Cassie would just like a little bit more time to get some items that I'm meeting with her next week. So she's planning to return to the board to give another informal. But that's going to take place on October 20th.
All right. So then let's look at the administrative items that we have. Let me first ask Carol, is there anything that you'd like to board based on this tonight's discussions?
No, not at this time, Madam Chair.
Right, thank you. All right, member comments and committee liaisons, but let's I'm going to take out of order. Are there any items not anticipated 48 hours in advance that anyone would like to raise? I see no interest in that. I would like then to change the order again and ask the planning director to give us updates.
Thank you. So let me just quick off the top of my head, update you on first the upcoming schedule. As I indicated, October 13th, we're going to be doing our special town meeting hearings. We're going to open that night. Last night I was before the select board. They did vote on the referral to send those articles back to begin that process. So what we'll do on that evening is we'll open the hearings for the three that are before you, you know, entertain any public comment that's come in. You can choose whether you want to modify the language. I will say the language that was circulated and filed for the initial public hearing notice is going to be slightly modified. The zoning bylaw working group had actually worked with Carolyn to review those articles. And there's a couple of modifications that were coming of that, but in spirit, you know, they're the same article content. So once I have that from Katie Dugan, I will circulate the revised draft language, the town clerk, the select board and all of you as well. And we use that language as the basis of the discussion on Wednesday. And then the following planning board meeting, we, you know, it's all right, we're going to resume our regular schedule. We have just in terms of things that are coming up, we'll continue 808 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, that site plan review. As you know, we'll deliberate on the one that just closed. We have 55 South Main, the application is still pending. We're anticipating late fall. And then another application that is pending is the return of the site plan review modification for 390 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. It is imminent. We have most of the application material, but it's not a complete filing at this time. So we're looking to see them at some point, probably mid-November at this time. Sorry, Tom, did you have a question?
Regarding 808, I just I had asked you this offline. The last time it was before us, I truly hope that our applicants are looking at the state highways plans and are going to give us some advice based on what the state highway department's plans for the road are or you know, for the improvements that they're making, because I don't think we can just, you know, make that decision in the vacuum of without knowing what the state highway plans are and what's the safest alternative. So I just I really hope somebody's looking at them.
Yep, that's noted. And before we I just don't want to get into too much conversation because that is an open public hearing, but I did give that information to the applicant and ask them to be prepared to address that. And I know that there that's the piece that they're waiting on the traffic report. So we'll do that next time. And that's pretty much it for planning board items. Other things that I've sort of been working on are, of course, master plan implementation, working on Elm Street corridor, and I won't steal too much thunder because Clark gives some of his update at the liaison appointments. In addition to Elm Street, I'm now working on the early phases with Katie Dugan and Corey Evans on a village revitalization initiative. That was one of the common threads that kept coming up in our conversations with the community and, you know, business owners in the village about looking at the village. I know this was done about 15 years or so ago. This would sort of be a 2.0 and looking at this. Things like parking and economic development and all sorts of things that are interrelated to the village. That's sort of being put on as an upcoming goal with master planning and the select board. Another thing is that's building is climate and resiliency. I'm working actually with we have a new, she's sort of part time climate and resiliency assistant who works with the Alternative Energy Commission and also the harbor committee under me. So she's been helping me and we're sort of planning a series of items to address. And ultimately, we're going to plan to have a summit with experts to talk about climate change and resiliency and all sorts of ways that this impacts the town, particularly given that we're a coastal community. So we're working on that as well. I'm trying to think what else. That is pretty much all that's going to the top of my head right now. But if anybody has any questions about ongoing initiatives that I may not have mentioned, please feel free to ask. I'm happy to answer.
Right. Thank you. So let's move on then to the member comments and committee liaison updates. Paul Cleary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we had an affordable housing steering committee meeting just 10 days ago, I think. And the meeting lasted about 25 minutes and there wasn't that much to report. You know, some things were spoken about one pleasant street and how, you know, that was on the market or potentially under agreement or something now. And that's some of the units that they are looking forward to getting. We still haven't had any any new units added to our housing stock in in many years, as you all know, and let's see what were other things discussed. I think there was talk about 55 Main Street and how we're excited to think about some affordable housing residential unit as well as potentially a commercial option on that. And I don't know if anyone brought that to town council. I don't know if that's really under the town council's umbrella. But that that discussion was along the lines of it would be nice if we could offer subsidized housing, but I don't think the I always say it wrong. Is it Lauren corrects me all the time? Is it CH? CD? What is it, Lauren?
Subsidized housing inventory. It's the S H I.
No, not that.
DHCD, DHCD.
Oh, DHCD, yes. Department of Housing and Community Development. There's too many acronyms.
I know, there's way too many acronyms. I get so confused. So anyway, you know, the goal is to put more residential units, but we thought it was a nice idea that had been presented in relation to 55 Main Street about a potentially affordable commercial space over there at that site, which, you know, we all thought was wonderful and give some sort of a startup business a chance to get into the cohesive market where they might not have been able to otherwise get into the class of market. So those, let's see, it was really no updates on 808 Jerusalem. Pleasant Street was discussed. 55 Main Street was discussed and I don't think there was really anything else that was discussed. I think you know, Lauren might remember it was kind of a brief meeting, but.
Yeah, it was. It was a brief meeting the last time around. I will just say, just for this board's sake, that there are, you know, this committee meets month to month. So sometimes there's not substantial updates in between from the last time they discussed each of the properties, but we do have 43 units in the pipeline that are going to be S H I eligible that are coming online in some stage permitting. And, you know, we're kind of we get updates here and there as to how those are proceeding. You know, the different properties, so.
Do you mean collectively?
Yeah, we have collectively through a series of different projects, whether it's the units at 390 CJC Highway, the ones at one Pleasant Street, the ones associated with the CrossFit Harbor and redevelopment. We have 808 Jerusalem Road, that's the two units that are going to be through Habitat. And I'm sure there's some that are escaping my brain right now. But so I did the, when I did pull together the affordable housing information, we have 43 units that are in the pipeline.
Got it.
All right, thank you. Clark Brewer.
Yeah, so just a follow up on the affordable housing thing. Years ago, we talked to Avalon about their ability to add units there. And they decided they didn't want to add units and sold their sold their project. But there is space as a part of their development to add 30, 40 units with all the infrastructure that's in place. And my understanding is that they're um, with all the infrastructure that's in place, and my understanding is that their um uh, their sewer use would allow, again, thirty, forty, fifty units.
Yeah, so actually, that that property, um, you're absolutely right, that they did, they tr- uh, changed ownership, but they recently um met with Jen and I actually, and they've been communicating with our sewer and water departments. They're interested, they're doing sort of their due diligence right now and exploring potential. Um, as I understand it, they are doing this with a series of other properties that they own, so it may not be that they eventually want to uh, head down this path in class, but they have met with us, we've expressed, um, you know, the town's sort of past iterations with this and and thinking this through and just sort of highlighting that the important piece to this would be um, the affordable units, because that is people have stated.
And and as rentals, they would all count towards the subsidized housing inventory.
Right, if the, if the twenty-five percent of the rental, the, where uh, deed restricted affordable units, we would get a count per the state statutes.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Clark, uh, Tom Callahan.
No, I I'm sorry, I I am the liaison to the Elm Street corridor, and we did have a meeting and looked at preliminary designs, and the goal is to put together some public uh, review hearings, albeit via Zoom instead of in person um, in the near future, sounds like probably not by the end of this month, but early November.
So actually, we're still planning for October twenty eighth.
Okay, so the thirty-first.
It's not the thirty-first, no, and it's October twenty eighth, it is via Zoom, um, and we will be putting out information about that this week, so stay tuned.
I think you'll all be interested in the preliminary design that's been put together. Um, so if you could pencil that in, that would be great.
Is it somewhat similar to what we talked about during the hearings?
Well, I'm gonna let you make up your mind during the
Well, it's a Thursday night, I can't guarantee that I can be there on a Thursday night.
It's a quarter.
Yeah.
I'll have some information you can review in advance, and if you have any questions, you know where to find me.
That's good, that's good, thank you, that's all I have.
Well, so um, in light of this conversation specifically, how did you find the use of the consultant for data collection? How did that go, did we get much data?
Are you talking about Weston and Sampson?
Uh, well, yeah, that be- they as a, as, I'm not really thinking of them personally, but as a tool, they had a series of tools, we used them, did they work well?
Yes, I would say so, they they put together um, actually two public input surveys, and they've done sort of data in the field collection, looking at best practices based on, you know, they've done many projects in similar areas, so they have expertise in these sort of public engagement processes, and they bring those tools to us, um, I will say that it's been a bit challenging, um, an added layer of complexity, given that it's all had to be had to take place virtually, um, and it's been a little disappointing to be truthful, and not even, we were hoping to have at least the third public forum that's coming up soon in person, um, because it really, it's just not the same um, experience and atmosphere to have a a public forum virtually. Um, you know, you really don't have that ability to have people break out and sort of, uh, you know ming- mingle around and see different tables and ideas and and see things in paper and, you know, put dots on papers, but with that said, we did get a decent amount of input, both of our surveys, um, we got a good level of response and um, we really, through the surveys and through hearing from residents and having, we had a focus group with village business owners, we were able to get information that really sort of kind of guided the working group towards a clear consensus on a recommendation, so I think that overall the process um, you know, of course, they always have their, their uh, trip hazards, and what what doesn't, but um, I think I'm overall satisfied with how this process has turned out so far.
Did they have any sort of pre-test of their instruments?
They did, yes.
Okay. Um, uh, only because I found plenty of typos, and I also thought some of the phraseology was confusing. So I was curious whether or not anybody provided that feedback, but it's good that it's, so are we going to have a third um engagement process?
Well, so, right now, we're having a public forum, and that'll be sort of the conclusion of this phase one portion of this. Um, so I'm not sure if you mean a public engagement process around this topic in general, or the next thing, but we will continue to have public engagement um, throughout the process. You know, for, for example, this is just phase one of Elm Street, and it's like a conceptual layout. This isn't even talking about the design details, like, do we want granite, do we want, it's not that level of detail. Uh, that will follow, and that will, of course, include more public engagement processes, but right now, that's not the level of detail we're going to get into.
Okay, great. Um, Tom, do you have anything to report?
Uh, just, well, zoning working group's been focused on the articles for the fall, after that, we are going to get into, I hope, the rewrite in a big way, but we did debate thoroughly at the last meeting, Carol can confirm this about whether to go forward this fall with any moratoriums, and we, either for the harbor or for house construction generally, and we decided against moratoriums in either area, that they wouldn't really be needed, uh, and wouldn't probably wouldn't accomplish what we would want them to accomplish, so we're not going forward with any moratoria this fall, just the, just the three articles.
Okay.
And then, and by the way, after those articles, we should then take up our regulatory changes on common driveways and residential access. We did actually combine those two regulations into a new combined one, but the working group hasn't signed off on that one yet, but that might make things a lot easier and simpler.
I I think it would be um, prudent of us to actually look at wherever we have regulations and see the extent to which there is a need to to improve them or make them more modern. Right, because I think we found that across the building process, that we could get things to be more modern if we had the time and the resources. So I don't really have much to say about economic development, other than, uh, some of you must have noted that three restaurants in town um, got two point four million dollars from funds that came from the federal government in support of local restaurants. I point this out to you because it was only three organizations that got that money. Um, C H R, uh, the Red Lion got two million, and then the two other organizations split the difference. If we had been organized, we could have done the work necessary to help the smaller restaurants fill out the forms to qualify for the, for the money. There was money that was left over, so as we go forward through the end of whatever COVID has, to ex- it, to whatever extent there are um, resources that are put before us as possibly available, I think it's important for us to consider asking the town to have a one-stop shop for, you know, and and hire somebody on spec to help uh, merchants and other organizations apply for the funds, because um, you, I I looked through the list, there was um, a hundred and seventy-seven recipients, and there were some towns that had five or six and there were some towns that had ten, and it, we, there was really no reason why we didn't have more, except that we didn't have our eye on the ball, and we didn't have the resources to facilitate the, the restaurateurs to fill out the documents, but the documents were not so onerous that we might have been able to qualify for further funds, and I think that if and when the Biden policy of whatever shapes uh, color and size is going to come out, is that we're going to see money rolling out that way. For example, I know that people are working in the White House, looking at the Economic Development Administration and adding specific little geographies that would be funneling money to places that don't otherwise get funds. We're one of those places that don't typically qualify for that kind of resource, so I I think we want to try to be um you know, light-footed and and be able to respond in a way, so, you know, Lauren, maybe you can convey that, you know, to Chris Senior, that that the options are going, there's going to be a lot of money all of a sudden, and the question is, do we have the resources to front the necessary salary for somebody to actually put a one-stop shop together and and cover the gambit of the various kinds of programs that are going to be available.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting topic, I think um, I'm happy to report that back to um, Chris Senior about that, and I think, you know, maybe another option if if it's not, for some reason, not feasible, to bring on staff capacity to do just that. Um, you know, what are ways, in other ways, that we can seek, whether it's partnership with um, you know such as our Chamber of Commerce, or, you know, the Class of Chamber of Commerce, things like that, I'm sure there's other ways that we can find a way, um, you know, to support businesses in this aspect, so I'm happy to report that back and sort of uh, think about how we might address that.
Okay, thank you, so do we have minutes to approve?
I don't believe we do at this point, we just approved um, some at our, our last meeting. Uh, but I do believe we'll have minutes ready for you to approve by October thirteenth.
Okay. Any further comments from anyone?
No.
All right, can someone bring up the Clark Brewer?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Uh, Tom Ca- or Clark Brewer?
I.
Tom Callahan.
Hi.
Paul Cleary.
I.
Glassmeyer, I, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you all, good night.
Night, everyone.